All right. Good evening to everyone. Called the December, hard to believe December, but December 2, City of Mount Vernon Council Meeting to Order. Not aware of any changes made to the agenda?
Just one small change. Under F, the ordinance, it should, just the title should say it's 12-2-2019A.
Okay.
If that changed the agenda, I would make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, Communications. Is there anybody that would like to address the council? If so, please do so now. Mr. Joe Jensen?
Hi, everybody. My name is Joe Jensen. I'm Director of Main Street and Marketing for the Mount Vernon-Lisbon Community Development Group. And I hope you all were out on Saturday. I know I saw some of you out. But, oh my gosh, it was such a big deal. We had at least three businesses telling me it was their biggest sales day ever. So Small Business Saturday went over really well. The other thing I wanted to tell you is I had a donor walk into the visitor center last week and write a check to CDG to be used for a very specific purpose. This particular donor wanted to keep this shop small momentum going and asked the CDG Board to create a program for them to turn their donation into community cash gift certificates. So over this next month, December, the CDG Board members are going to be on the street and they're going to be looking for people who are shopping locally and hand them a $25 community cash gift certificate. They'll look something like this, and they also get a shirt like this. We've been working with John and Amanda over at One Mission. Shop small every day. So this is a shop small every day campaign. So that's something to look forward to, anybody in town who's shopping. The only thing I told the CDG Board members is they can't give it to anyone they know. So it's got to be a total stranger to them. So, and they're going to be going all over both Mount Vernon and Lisbon and doing this through December 31. So another incentive to shop local.
Good, very good.
Yeah, it's very creative.
That anonymous donor has obviously instigated something really great.
Yeah. Well, you know, many, many people are donating to CDG right now. It's our investment drive. Many here have donated, and thank you all very much. But it's really neat when a donor says, "Oh, and by the way, I want you to spend it this way." And so there's lots we could do with that money, but we're required to do something really cool with it. That's really neat for us. Anyway, that was all I had tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Joe.
All right. Is anybody else that would like to address the council? All right, seeing no one else, we'll move on to the administration of oath for Reserve Officer, Emily, is it Beeler?
Beeler. Wanted to take this opportunity to introduce Emily to the council. Emily is a Cornell student. She's a junior at Cornell, plays volleyball and lacrosse. She signed up in kind of a unique opportunity we had this year. She requested to be an intern with us to the second block, I think it was. And so she spent three and a half weeks with us, kind of riding along, getting to know everything and seeing how we police. She's interested in a career in law enforcement, and so she got some exposure that way and seeing what we're doing around here. And apparently got her passion fired up a little bit because she wants to continue that after her internship's over. So she requested and applied to be a reserve officer with us as a volunteer officer for our department as she continues to live and go to school in the area and finish up with school. So her background's completed, and we've done everything that we need to do for the hiring process. She was a great intern for us, and I think she'll work out real well in that capacity as she continues to, you know, get to work with her and mentor her into law enforcement somewhere as she pursues her dreams. So this is Emily, and this is the city council. Tonight, we're going to administer the oath of office that she's required to do for that position. So, Mr. Mayor?
All right. Obviously, I'm in front of you, so I'll try not to read too much.
I'll read your name.
I state your name.
Emily Beeler.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will faithfully and impartially do the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully and impartially do the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the Office of Police Officer in the City of Mount Vernon.
Discharge all the duties of the Office of Police Officer in the City of Mount Vernon.
As now and hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law. Thank you.
That's awesome.
Yeah, thank you, Emily.
I don't want to be able to erase it.
Nice mustache. All right. We will move on to the consent agenda. Approval of council minutes from our November 18 meeting as well as approval of liquor license for Glenn Marr.
I will move to approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, public hearing. Public hearing on the final plat of Brolick 3rd addition to Lynn County, Iowa. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to address the council on this item? Safe to say no, so I will close the public hearing. Proceed to Resolution 12-2-2019A approving the final plat of Brolick 3rd addition to Lynn County, Iowa. Chris?
This is a, I did include a map. This is the area. There's a house located with all of these outbuildings, and they were splitting that off of the rest of the farmstead. So 1, 2, this will be 3. This will be the last subdivision they're able to do in this area. However, without doing kind of a more in-depth plan for us, it does meet the code requirements for a farmstead split, so we don't have any issue with this. Planning and zoning commission unanimously approved it, so with that, we would recommend approval.
And there is a map in the packet, so we actually have an opportunity to review it.
I would make motion to approve Resolution 12-2-2019A, final plat of Brolick 3rd addition to Lynn County.
Second.
Any comments? No comments. Roll call, please, Sue.
Yes? Ron, Lewis, O'Carroll, Rose.
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Weasler.
Yes. We all passed that test, though. That's good. On our toes.
Nobody chimed in, right? All right, next item, ordinance 12-2-2019A, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on certain property located within the Stone Brook Urban Renewal Area in the City of Mount Vernon, County of Lynn, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Mount Vernon, County of Lynn, Mount Vernon Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to that indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Stone Brook Urban Renewal Area, Phase 1 and Phase 2A parcels.
So this is the kickoff, basically establishing the base value for these two phases. I will tell you that we can do the first reading tonight, but we will have to do second and third at the next meeting. That value needs to be established by January 1. Otherwise, some of the houses that are being constructed right now would be counted against the base value. We don't want that for the developer. So this is an ordinance that's provided us to by the bond council. So again, tonight, first reading, and then maybe second and third at the next meeting.
They could do all three tonight if they so.
You can, yes. It would take all of you.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw that out there.
To do that. There is nothing out of the ordinary with this ordinance. We've already kind of gone through this process for the last year and a half. This is the last step before they can start collecting or we can start collecting increment for those two phases. And it starts their 10-year clock.
Right, so this is the collection of the TIF funds.
Correct.
And then it starts the clock.
Yeah, so it establishes that base value in there, and then now all of the housing that is going up right now would be the increment that we can start to collect.
Gotcha.
Everything is so far behind because it takes almost a year for TIF collections to come in, and it takes a year for the house to get on the tax rolls. So they're almost two years behind before they even start.
Anybody else have any other questions? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of ordinance 12-2-2019, providing the general property tax levy and collection of the TIF funding.
Yeah, you don't have to read all of it if you don't want to.
Yeah, thank you.
And is that 12-2-2019?
Yes. Is it?
That was the amendment. Yeah, so that was the change.
Yeah, but now, okay, so I'm confused because the resolution, oh, that's, okay, so that's the ordinance, sorry.
Nope.
Okay, ordinance 12-2-2019A.
I'll second.
Any comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
Rose.
Yes.
Weasler. What?
Yes.
Yes.
We all passed that test, though. That's good. On our toes.
Nobody chimed in, right? All right, next item, ordinance 12-2-2019A, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on certain property located within the Stone Brook Urban Renewal Area in the City of Mount Vernon, County of Lynn, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Mount Vernon, County of Lynn, Mount Vernon Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to that indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Stone Brook Urban Renewal Area, Phase 1 and Phase 2A parcels.
So this is the kickoff, basically establishing the base value for these two phases. I will tell you that we can do the first reading tonight, but we will have to do second and third at the next meeting. That value needs to be established by January 1. Otherwise, some of the houses that are being constructed right now would be counted against the base value. We don't want that for the developer. So this is an ordinance that's provided us to by the bond council. So again, tonight, first reading, and then maybe second and third at the next meeting.
They could do all three tonight if they so.
You can, yes. It would take all of you.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw that out there.
To do that. There is nothing out of the ordinary with this ordinance. We've already kind of gone through this process for the last year and a half. This is the last step before they can start collecting or we can start collecting increment for those two phases. And it starts their 10-year clock.
Right, so this is the collection of the TIF funds.
Correct.
And then it starts the clock.
Yeah, so it establishes that base value in there, and then now all of the housing that is going up right now would be the increment that we can start to collect.
Gotcha.
Everything is so far behind because it takes almost a year for TIF collections to come in, and it takes a year for the house to get on the tax rolls. So they're almost two years behind before they even start.
Anybody else have any other questions? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of ordinance 12-2-2019, providing the general property tax levy and collection of the TIF funding.
Yeah, you don't have to read all of it if you don't want to.
Yeah, thank you.
And is that 12-2-2019?
Yes. Is it?
That was the amendment.
Yeah, so that was the change.
Yeah, but now, okay, so I'm confused because the resolution, oh, that's, okay, so that's the ordinance, sorry.
Yep.
Okay, ordinance 12-2-2019A.
I'll second.
Any comments? Roll call, please, Sue.
Rose.
Yes.
Weasler. What?
Yes.
Yes.
We're good? All right. We will move on to motions for approval, consideration of claims list. Anybody have any questions?
I did have one question. Let me get to, it was the second item was, what was it, credit card, something?
Yeah, I saw that, too.
Credit card purchases for $9,765 and change. What sort of things would fall under? I mean, that's just a lump of no detail.
So I review a statement from each of the credit cards. Each department has them right now. For instance, some of the large purchases that are occurring are out at the PD. So wood, framing, drywall, things of that nature. So if they fall under their limit, they're allowed to use their credit card with basically prior approval, and then they're reviewed by both Marsh and myself.
Gotcha. Okay, so there are some eyes on it.
You, the city, we just lump all of the department credit cards into one payment, and that's why it ends up being a $200 amount.
But then for the total of that, you know, in the roll-up that had been, it looks like it's not on, yeah, it is, for the departments that they're going into, where does that fund?
Where does the money come from?
Yeah, because we, you know, you indicate that at the bottom of this, which, you know, coming, was toward general fund, road use. So where, if this is coming from different departments?
It comes from each one of those funds.
So it is?
So police is a general fund.
Okay, so the funds within that credit card total are divvied up amongst these? Am I jumping ahead of you?
Yes.
Yes, so they can be. So, for instance, Public Works is funded by various departments, road use tax.
Right.
So they may be divvied up amongst all of these funds, depending on the department that is covering the credit card. And then it gets a little bit more complicated than that because it depends on what they're purchasing. So if they have a $1,000 purchase for water supplies, then it gets...
Has to go to the water fund.
Yeah, it gets taxed to the water fund.
Gotcha.
Parks and Rec and police are typically general fund expenses.
Okay.
But for your purposes, it comes out of their operating budget. It's just easier for us today to track and make credit card purchases this way versus doing a PO. So a lot of purchases we can do online now, so.
Okay. I just, and I just want to make sure some eyes were on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
And then, like I said, individual statements are for each department.
Correct. With that, I would move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Consideration of claim?
That one, yes. The consideration of claims.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of pay application 1, security package for LBC.
This pay app's in the amount of $31,466.14. Some of the cameras are actually already up. The cable has been pulled in a lot of locations, so they're making significant progress. Happy so far with their work.
Good.
Okay, good.
We still have with the number of locations, number of cameras and locations of them now that we're...
Yeah, so they'll have to be adjusted twice, likely twice, once they're on. So we'll be able to make sure that we're happy with all of their locations. But they're able to show us via the prints where we have potential dead spots, and they're very limited, mainly in the four corners of the track where the track overhangs and underneath. But yeah, I think, like I said, as long as they are all positioned where they're intended to, we'll be happy with the coverage.
Do any of those cameras have the ability to like, to be, to move, to pan?
No.
They have to be fixed and...
Yes.
Okay.
We probably could have done with less cameras had we gone to that. The unfortunate part is, is even the motion activated cameras, there's a lapse in time. So most of what happens at this facility is we're going to need real-time video footage. So we just elected to go to 42, 42 cameras and try to keep eyes on just about every square inch.
Well, fewer moving parts means fewer things that break, too.
Yeah.
That was the other part is hopefully less maintenance.
Yep.
And is the recalibration later on included in this 31?
It is. So 2R in the future, after that, then we're responsible for it.
Beyond that, okay, gotcha. With that, I would move approval of pay application number 1 to the LBC for Tri-City Electric in the amount of $31,466.14.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of pay application number 12, LBC.
This pay application's in the amount of $600,646.15. Staff would recommend that you approve this pay application pending architectural approval because of the short week last week. They haven't gotten through all of the quantities yet. That being said, I don't want to wait until the 16th table isn't, wait until the 16th. So as long as staff gets the letter of recommendation from the architectures, we would just go ahead and release these funds. But it'd be four weeks, almost a seven-week lapse between pay applications if we wait till the 16th. So not really concerned about it. The architects just haven't gotten through it, and we talked today at 5 o'clock, slightly before 5 o'clock, and nothing out of the ordinary. They just wanted to double-check quantities.
I'll approve of pay application 12 in the amount of $600,646.15 for the LBC, pending the architect approval.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of pay application number 6, 2019 Water Waste Water.
This pay application's in the amount of $274,623.56. Work will start to slow down here at this facility just because it's a lot of weather-dependent items. With that being said, we just had an update last week, and very happy with the progress of this meeting, care of this project. Kind of a tale of two projects for me right now. I rarely have to go to the site.
Generally, good things, please.
Every day at the other.
Probably glad for that.
Yeah.
I will make a motion to approve pay application number 6 for the waste 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 facility to the $274,623.56.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of office carpeting bids for the police station.
So Chief Shannon has received three bids, with the apparent low bidder being Carpet King and the amount of $9,833.30. I will tell you that this gets a lot of the facility carpeted. It does not get the entire thing because we're still not sure what we're going to do with the sanctuary and a few other areas. So what we are attempting to do with this and the next bid is to basically get them landed in the facility. So maintaining carpet tiles, it's the easiest maintenance, easiest to replace. Received a good appraisal on the piano today, so hopefully that will offset our costs if we get it sold.
I assume we'll have plenty of carpet tiles extra, so to speak.
I'm not ordering extra yet, just because, we're going to take it all. If you remember the east portion, like where we're going to land, all the way to that west sanctuary wall, or the first sanctuary wall, that's going to be like Phase 1 for the carpet. So we're doing everything on that side. So even if we couldn't get this carpet in the future, we can still, there's a pretty good division wall that we can change carpet and still make it look professional and flow through there. One of the things was, we were looking at, do we buy all the carpet at once to make sure we still have it? But it's a new enough version that we think we probably got a couple years, we might be able to get on this yet. And as budget year ends come in, if we got funding left over, we can go and purchase and store it or something like that at that point, too, so.
If you can get a few extra, I would, just because I know at Collins, if somebody spills coffee, you try to clean it, then you got a big brown. They could just pull up that one carpet tile and put a new one down and...
There was, there will be some of that extra, a handful, not a lot.
Right.
There's a couple offices I had them hold off. They bid it, and we're going to not carpet it right away as we wait to see, wait for the architect opinions to come in. So we'll have some of that extra, too.
Anybody have a question?
You could approve Carpet King's bid and give Chief Shannon a window of $2,000 extra should he want to, or could purchase additional tiles.
I just think it'd be smart.
You'll see the, in the Carpet King, there's like two or three different versions, two different pages. The last one is just, it's very, 98, 30, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry. The first page is like 9,800 or something like that.
9,833, 30.
It's very, it doesn't give you a lot of detail, but the second page gives you the detail. But it was, that was the original bid on square footage, and what we did is switch to the type of carpet, the design of carpet. So once it got one name, and then we're going with the first page there is what it's going to look like. So that's the price discrepancy a little bit there on the front, but the front page is the one. And then you'll see on that, it's got the two other areas, west end and then the sanctuary or conference room area for future proposals, what they're...
Oh, those are the, basically five grand, split-out kind of ones? Okay, gotcha.
So you could approve the bid not to exceed...
Like 11,800.
$11,800 pending review by administrator there.
So you're confident that in this portion that you're asking for, you're going to, you're not making significant changes to those areas?
Correct.
And that's why you're waiting on the others, right?
So this will get us, like I said, as we come in, what I'm kind of trying to do in Phase 1 is everywhere we're going to be operating before we move desks and stuff in there at this point. So when I land in there, we don't have to move a desk later to put in carpet and stuff like that. So we're doing everywhere we're going to land immediately. We're going to re-carpet all that and put in, and then the desks, we receive them from Hills Bank, they've donated. They did a remodel of the bank in Hills.
That's great.
Took out their modular equipment and brought it all up for us and agreed to set it up for us for free, too.
Oh, that is wonderful.
It was huge savings for us that way, as I was shopping around looking for furniture and stuff like that.
That's a huge savings.
It is used furniture, but it's in, it's in pretty good shape.
It's bank-used, not cop-used.
To kind of answer your question, so most of the east half of the building from a construction standpoint is mainly partition walls, non-load-bearing scenarios. So we can do a lot in that east wing with the exception of any major, the major change that I think we've talked about doing in that area is the additions of locker rooms, which wouldn't require the carpet tile as well. But the sanctuary is such a big question mark, we're still debating on what can be done with it, and do we potentially turn half of it into a garage, do we not? And again, it's a clean partition with two load-bearing walls on either side. So we're not going to be able to continuously open that area anyway, and that leaves just a small wing on the, on the west side of the building. And again, you could almost treat that as its own.
Yeah, it's kind of divided up that way. If you needed to do three separate sections, you could, or carpeting, just to break it up a little bit that way, too.
Who's going to remove the old stuff? Chief?
Carpet King, that's part of this.
That's part of it.
Oh, that's part of it? Okay, good.
The city guys were more than ecstatic to let them go ahead and do that.
That's a dirty job.
They got the tools and equipment.
Good. All right, anybody else?
I just want to comment, I certainly don't have issue with this. I'm glad that you're looking at this in chunks, and I know that you're working on it, but it would be nice to see a roll-up of costs by phase in all totals. So we kind of know what we have to work with, you know, as a total number, so we're not number six, Fifth Avenue and First Street traffic signal. Chris?
So this is the final pay application, the amount of $8,357.95, which is the retainage. The 30-day window has come and gone. The DOT has signed off on the project. I included that paperwork as well. The final contract price was $197,159. And then just under $60,000 is coming back from the state.
I'd move approval of pay application number six for the Fifth Ave and First Street traffic signal project in the amount of $8,357.95.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of floor covering for the LBC. Matthew has, it's kinda like show and tell tonight, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna have some fun. Thank you. So, okay, I will keep it short. So as you know, we have, or maybe you don't know, we've rented out the facility for a wedding, September 19th. We have quite a few events that are, have been talked about or considered. The gym floor is what we're trying to protect. We didn't have a plan in place. As you can imagine, as people come to a fancy event or a wedding or something a little bit more elegant than a basketball game, they're gonna be wearing different types of shoes. And those types of shoes are gonna probably put a little bit of damper on our floor. Heels, black sole shoes, across the board, as you can imagine, no dress shoes or anything but black sole, pretty much. So we are trying to come up with a plan to protect a majority of the floor, if not all of the floor. I'm not so much concerned about the multipurpose space as I am about the gymnasium floor. So I have some options here we're looking at and would like to present them to you. May I approach the bench?
Sure.
Okay.
And was part of your first plan to ask them if they could just kick off their heels while they're dancing?
Well, to be quite honest, we didn't really expect, I mean, we expected people to rent out the multipurpose space. That's the reason it's a roll, kind of a laminate type.
We talked about that.
You know, surface, but I don't think we were, I wasn't expecting, you know, somebody to really wanna come in and rent out the entire facility, with the exception of like club sports.
Yeah.
So when the first item out of the gate was a wedding, and they asked to do or rent the entire facility, then I was like, oh. And if you haven't seen a maple floor like this go in, they nail each individual's board. That is about yay wide, and can be from that distance to my arms. And so there's a reason they're expensive. Talking to the floor installers, they've been doing the same stain install for basically the same way. The only thing that's changed are the nailers. But as I put in my staff report, we're looking at a floor covering, covering two different things. One, it's a little bit easier for us to put down, a little easier for us to put down. And then, of course, it stores a little easier for us as well, because storage is limited. But it's not the cheapest version. It's closer to $17,000 and probably not to exceed somewhere in the neighborhood of $18,000. As I told the mayor before the meeting, this wasn't a specific item listed in the $100,000 worth of equipment. However, from a contingency standpoint, we're sitting really well. We're less than, we're still well less than 50% of our contingency use. So having a newfound respect for the flooring, I think this would be very well worth our, our time to purchase. And this is gonna kickstart a series of purchases over the next two, council meetings.
Two or three council meetings, yeah.
So you mentioned 17 to 18, the quote I have in front of us is...
Yeah, I haven't gone through all of them yet. I've got five different...
Is he jumping the gun?
Yeah, he's, he's taking my thunder right now.
You've got the mic.
I know, you like to talk.
We got, we got the one ball. You get it. You get it. Put them out, right? The first product is a, a thin vinyl. The issue with that is, the two carts that we, the two carts that we'd have to utilize are fairly large. We don't have a place for them. So it's a nice price. We, I don't have a sample of that product, but it's, it's a decent price. But I just don't think it's conducive for our facility, based on the storage that would be required. Those carts are fairly large. This is a second type that's a little bit too thin, I think, in my opinion. But I wanted to give you an idea of some of the products that are out there. That one there is four foot by 105-foot rolls, and we'd have to have 20 rolls of that. And then the carts, I don't even have the carts yet for price, but they look like, they're like, almost like applicators. You'll see the guy on the second page there.
Yeah.
That company that I called, they didn't even have the applicator, so I have to find them somewhere else. So...
Have you thought about the time it's gonna take you guys?
Yeah. So we've talked about that. And, you know, obviously, we're gonna pass it on to the user, but we will have it appropriately. We'll have to have several people come in. Depending on the size of the event, where it's located, we'll have to have them come in and put those down.
You might go over this in your little spiel here, Matthew. Is it like a wrestling mat that once they're down, then you have to get some clear tape and...
So there's different mechanisms on several of them. Like the one that's right here, you'll have Velcro. That one, you'll probably end up, that one actually sits by itself on the, on the, on surface itself, but you can feel how light it is. It's supposed to catch and grab. I'm not sure if somebody's dancing on it or moving fairly quickly, that they're gonna catch and grab on that product.
Maybe we don't want somebody to trip.
Correct.
Yeah.
Especially with a heel or something.
So I'm gonna get down the line here. But the first product is also a vinyl, so it's a very thin vinyl that I've seen in several gyms. And I feel it doesn't protect enough for what we might have.
But I wonder, if people are in heels and jumping, I mean, it feels like...
Doing the chicken dance.
So we found this product here, this one here is probably our favorite, right here, this one. And the carts are fairly small. So what would happen with this product that Stephanie has is, we would probably, excuse me, we would probably store this off-site. Thank you, Doug. Somewhere that's appropriate. And then have, during the special event that we would need it, we would have Public Works help bringing it over. Sorry, Nick. We've talked to both parties, and they're not happy about it. But that's the best I think I can do. Because again, we wouldn't have a lot of, that's only gonna require two carts, though, for transporting. So it's not gonna, and the carts are just like dollies. They're not obtrusive or anything. So we could easily store that in our building.
But what about weather?
Yeah.
If you've got weather involved.
If we're transporting it and it's raining, or...
Yeah. I mean, that's an issue we'd have to try to overcome.
Throw a tarp over it.
Why that product on a cart versus this first product on a cart?
Yeah. So the cart's much bigger. If you look at the second page.
It's got a, it's got the real wide...
This one?
Yeah.
I was thinking that one.
Is that the, I'm not sure.
No, I was talking about that.
Oh, that one there? So that, that cart is gonna be this big thing here.
Yeah.
So what would this one, like, is that cart significantly different than this cart?
Than this cart?
No, those carts are the same.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So you're recommending that one?
We're recommending this one.
That type of cart.
Oh, that cart? Yeah, sorry. We're getting to the good stuff.
So on these, the, is the fuzzy part the one that was gonna, would be up? Or is it the slick part that would be up?
No, the fuzzy part would be up on that one.
Okay, gotcha.
And then, everything is facing up that you would see.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
This one here is what you would see, and this is the solid, this would be the base.
Fair enough, okay.
Yep. It's a little bit heavier product.
Wow. This looks like Doug's carpet squares.
Pretty, pretty similar, I think, yeah. It could be. And that's, they come in rolls of, they're 39 by 78 is the tile sizes. So the three, a little over three foot by six and, six foot six inches. And they would come in that cart, we'd unload them and load them and load them and load them.
So they just come out as flat?
Flat.
Okay.
Yep.
These are just straight up dollies? Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's all it is.
All right.
And then this is the last product, which is a little more expensive. It's the same product as what you have in your hand there, but it's thinner. It's a little less thickness.
So people, in theory, if they rent tables and chairs to be brought in, they're gonna be sitting them on here as well as maybe using them for dance floor or whatever, right?
Depending on the type of, so it's only maybe five or six tables or chairs. I think we could handle that, because they would be appropriate for the floor. We'd make sure they're appropriate for the floor. They didn't have some type of rubber on the, the chair legs and so forth. I'm more worried about feet, and then also the wear and tear from people not brushing off their shoes.
Right.
Or, you know, movement on it. Tables and chairs could, it would help that, or absolutely. We could put those out there, but I just don't know if it would be appropriate for, depends on the event. So just putting the mats underneath the tables and chairs may be not enough. I mean, we need to put it for the surface of half the gymnasium, per se. Depending on, you know, say it's an anniversary party for 35 people, then we could put it on half of the gymnasium as opposed to the full gym, or just under the table. Sometimes that looks a little odd, you know?
Well, it does bring up the importance of the ceiling on that floor, because, you know, for example, we go to the concerts at the middle school. It's on the gym floor, and they've got those risers sitting there. So it's not like, it hasn't been done.
Yeah. So we can utilize this product when we have our bleachers.
Yeah.
That'll be something I'll be coming the next meeting with you, is tip and roll bleachers, that we could put this product underneath those when we have events for the, for that. It could be multi-use. It doesn't have to be just for a special event. We can use it for, or scorekeeping basketball. It would be less obtrusive to have a piece of carpet under there as it would be for a anniversary party. You know, so, so we're just, those are options we're just looking at. Feel free to review them. The one we liked best was the squares.
So the pricing of the quote is based on the total square foot of both gyms?
Yeah, both gyms. Yep. Not the all-purpose space included as well. So it's 85, 80, I believe, I'm a top, 85, 80 square feet.
And you like the square ones as opposed to the longer strip ones?
The long, well, they're both basically the same product. It's just a different cut that they sent us samples of. So they're both about the same size. The square ones are a little bit thicker, you'll notice.
Okay.
If you put them side by side, those are a little bit more thickness.
They are.
Help me understand how the seams are gonna be handled?
Pardon?
How are the seams gonna be handled?
So those are heavy enough that the seams stay down, and there's no tape needed or anything of that nature? You just put them, butt them?
Have you seen these in action anywhere?
I have not yet. We plan on taking them.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
And I assume there'll be a little bit of instruction on installation, which I know it's not rocket science, but just making sure it's installed correctly.
They recommended you set them next to each other.
Which is never quite that easy.
I hear ya.
It's, it's not just the material itself, it's about the time it's gonna take you guys, or Nick's team, or whoever it is.
Well, I guess, Nick doing the transporting, then our staff would be the ones installing it. So, yeah.
That's one of those things, you don't wanna skimp too much, because obviously, the gym floor is costing...
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd rather. A lot, so you don't really wanna save $5,000, $8,000 now.
And honestly, you can kinda U2 them, but the squares themselves, you know, they're not like a typical mat, per se. They are raised. So they're, it is like a carpet square and just a much larger version of a carpet square. They're not going to necessarily move, although rolling heavy equipment across them might get them to curl up. But again, what we're trying to protect the floor from is kinda just the general wear and tear. The rental of the facility currently is about $2,500.
$2,200.
$2,200. And we're already talking about the fact that, you know, certain things like this, we won't be able to, to obviously backcharge the one that kinda threw us for a loop to begin with. But moving forward, we'll have a better idea on practicality, how much we're going to have. But we can require, from a staging perspective, where we want them to set certain items. Our biggest thing, like I said, is, I mean, our expectation is the dance floor materials, some of the tables, more of the equipment will happen on the all-purpose portion of the floor. I think in this situation, it's just as much about making sure that they have the entire building, so it has less of a, you know, ruck field where people are up walking around as you're trying to hold an event, as they need the space. So, I mean, it's not a huge wedding, per se. It's more a couple of different things.
Having the use, yeah. If, if these are gonna be under events, how do they deal with, like, liquids that are spilled and food that gets dropped? And I mean, is that...
So the, the, there's a warranty on them, and then also they have, so warranties, I think, only like three months, something like that. But they're also, there's a, I wanna say, cleaning plan, if you will, or whatever. I didn't bring it with me, but they scrub water, and so that's basically what it is prescribed. But obviously, if you have, let's say, and, and we're gonna do our best to not allow red wine and...
Well, but you can't, right, right.
But...
There's gonna be, we're gonna have to build into a budget of replacement.
Yeah.
I mean, there's just gonna be a certain, but back to what Doug's doing, it's, you know, you spill coffee on one, you don't have to pull up the entire thing, right? So five a year.
That was my fear with the, some of the longer rolls and things, is that if something got scratched or torn, then we're replacing the whole long strip as opposed to just the top.
So in the yoga room, there's also the maple floor, correct?
In the fitness yoga studio.
In the fitness yoga. So this could also be used up there if need be, correct? But the quote does not incorporate any...
Because they're not permanent, we just assume we get enough to cover the basement, and then if we needed to cover the second floor, we could take that.
We can use them throughout the building, anywhere.
We're also planning, for instance, to use them, we will have to, we are looking to, to purchase a lift for maintenance purposes. It has to be lightweight. We're gonna need it at the police station as well. But I do not wanna pay a contractor to come out every time we need to replace light fixtures or anything like that. So, especially when we have somebody on staff. So we're, we're currently getting costs, specifications as far as how heavy the lift that we can. But even, even if the lift is designed to go on a floor like that, we'll still drive it over these tiles as a protection. So...
That's a good point. I wanna know some more for it. Yeah.
They're, they're, I don't believe in conversations with, with Matt, there is a solution out there that fits every checkmark. This one probably comes as close as we can get.
I would agree.
And I think, you know, at the end of the day, if we end up having to add Velcro or do something, I just don't foresee it happening, not in the way that we plan to use these. We still control, and we'll have this facility staffed while these events are taking place. So it's not as if they rent the facility here, we hand them the keys and come back the next day. So I'm fairly confident that, that this will work. It is a big investment, but then again, replacing that floor is as well. But to your point, yes. I mean, this is just gonna get added to a list of depreciation accounts that we'll have, similar to we do with all of the fleet, that, you know, the floors will have a depreciation value. And we're, you know, the thought is, the reason that we funded the project in the manner that we did is, is those franchise, or those sales tax dollars that are coming earmarked for this for the next 15 years, will immediately go to start funding the depreciation accounts of all of those items. And then when we have met the replacement values for each of those locations, then we can scale that back and use it for payments. So again, we've done our best to at least project into the future as far as we can.
And I think that's something you mentioned earlier, Chris, in terms of the rental fees, with this, this one being the first in terms of the full rental of the building. I mean, if it's something where somebody wants to rent the building and they need the entire building, but they don't need the dance floor, then obviously, we can charge them less as opposed to, we're gonna need eight hours of labor to get the thing rolled out and put back. And, and we can charge them more, depending on what they're gonna be utilizing it for.
Just like everything else, as you move forward, you'll know more what's involved.
Yeah. This first year is gonna be a huge learning curve across the board.
Even if you have to some point, review those rental agreements and put limitations or restrictions in. And based on your time, the staff's time, or, you know, all of that.
Consequently, this can happen once a month for a maximum 12 times per year.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And that's not gonna happen.
Yes. I mean, will it, will it be labor-intensive? Yes. Will Nick, you know, roll his eyes like my kids when, when I tell him that this is coming? Yes. But at the same time, member-based facility first, and then all of this is kinda secondary.
Right. And that's the other point I was gonna make, is that we have to remember, too, that it's shutting it down from everyone else.
Yeah, we don't wanna do it. That's why I put the...
Limitations on it.
Limitations in place, is to, it's members. And the worst thing you can do is limit the number of hours members can utilize of the facility.
The city's already been through that.
And I think a lot of that's communication. If you communicate it to them, you have a calendar out, and you publish that a month in advance, so they know to plan their workouts around that day, you got way less of an issue.
Yep. Well, that's, we're trying to be upfront and be organized.
Yep.
All right. Anybody else have anything?
This wedding is the one event for September 2020 that's using the whole facility?
Correct. Yep, for that month. Yep. So...
So volleyball?
Yeah.
They're only using the gym.
They're only using the gym.
Yep. So we have a volleyball tournament, the...
The Shirley Ryan Classic.
Shirley Ryan, thank you. Shirley Ryan Invitational, that's what I mean, or the Labor Day weekend. Yep. But they're just renting the gym.
Okay, that's good.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions on the floor covering? Otherwise, entertain a motion.
I would move approval of the floor color covering as recommended in Matt's note from Kiefer USA, totaling on this bid $17,725.50.
Do you recommend not to exceed $18,000, or does it matter?
I would actually recommend, give us a little bit of room not to, not to exceed $19,000 at this point, just to make sure that we can get a couple panels if we need to. The current plan, like I said, is to store them at the new police station, transport them up in the new vehicle.
Gotcha. In that case, I would amend my movement to not to exceed $19,000.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Mr. Mayor, I know that we've already had a motion on this, but Doug pointed out afterwards that my report, I believe that there was three bids for the cabling and phone system, and two of them were from Tecnicom for each one. So the 5415 was for cabling, and there was a bid in there as well for 6574 for the phones. So the grand total.
Oh, we did the one.
Yeah. We approved the 5415 for the cabling, but the 6574 for the phone system itself would also be part of that. So I didn't know if the council wanted to.
And that's a voiceover IP system?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, because, so it's out of order, yeah, because there's the practical security.
So grand total, we're just under $12,000.
Gotcha.
So let's go back and amend that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the $6,574 for the phone system for the new police station.
A second.
Does that work, or do you want?
Or do we want just to read?
For everything?
No, that's fine.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chief, good catch.
Thank you.
Next item, discussion item, preliminary CIP. Everybody should have hot-off-the-press copies, and this is just more to give everybody an opportunity, now obviously not tonight, but to look through it, and we'll have further discussions. But Chris, what else did you want to add?
Nothing. At the very top, in dark orange, are the two fiscal years that you have. Fiscal year '20 is the current, and fiscal year '21 is next year. You will see, especially at the bottom, things drop off. I will update you at the next meeting, for instance, a number of the items on fiscal year '20, especially, you know, the expected completion, most of those, all but one are done. So the SCBA fill station replacement is actually going to occur this spring of this year, so. And then, of course, other projects, the Fifth Avenue traffic signals are done, Elliot Park purchase is done, those will both drop off. So if you don't see them transfer from one year to the next, it's because I'm probably projecting them to be done sooner rather than later. So what I really want you to kind of concentrate on, if you would, is under fiscal year '21, there's the, this is the current list that I haven't gone through and made sure we have funding for. So this is the wish list, if you'll call it, of the department heads currently, and they're current, they're reviewing it right now to make sure that I haven't missed anything, but if there are items on here that you know that we're missing, that you want to see, or there's item on, items on here that you would like more explanation on, you know, please, this is the time to kind of have that conversation. At the meetings of January, you'll have five years' worth of these, but as each year gets out, it gets a little bit further. But it's just more to show you, here's what we all have from thousands to millions of dollars' worth of expenses.
Yeah.
Few things, we're still, franchise fee is kind of all over the board. It's been difficult for Sue and I to project out what we're going to have on an annual basis, so we have reached the 5%, so we will now be able to kind of project on a yearly basis the amount that we'll have. We have a lot of streets and trail projects coming next year, so at the next meeting, I will explain this to you, but we have money coming back from Tiff, going back into franchise fee, which will turn around and spend again, plus $60,000 coming back from the state. So when you see this explanation of two pages long, you'll just have to bear with me, because there's money that has gone out, coming back in, franchise fee, money that we're going to collect, projects that we didn't expect, police station and First Street. So I've had to scramble. Certain projects will be on the list. Davis Park is a big one. It's going to stay on the list, but it's all dependent on whether or not we, all the other projects before it pan out the way that they do. So we still have some big question marks. I mean, the First Street Bridge, the Railroad Bridge, and Bowers, the underpass, they're both slated at about $180,000. And if they hold their great, if they don't, you know, then I'm going to have to dip back into the franchise fees to cover that expense, which would push Davis Park further out. So what you approve at the beginning of the year is kind of the perfect projection that I can get, and then we go out and buy a police station and it throws it all out. So anyway, this is for kind of you to peruse and.
So all the other departments have some stuff listed other than fire?
So fire just bought a truck.
Right.
Wasted all of.
They're done.
So it's the same thing that I would say to you about the police station. We're going to give you, do an architecture review and probably show you how much could actually be done there, and I'm going to tell them next year you have $100,000 to spend over the next two years, and that's it.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
That'll be the, the little bit of the struggle that you're going to have, is some of these projects, trails, things like that, have healthy funding mechanisms, others do not.
Yep.
Never know when the curveball's coming.
And I really do want to, it's your prerogative, but I would really push the council to not leverage franchise fees for loan payments. So I don't want to try, or I want to try to avoid going out and borrowing a million dollars and repaying that with franchise fees, because then it leverages a third of that money annually. And that's kind of what's happened so far with sales tax. And so you're going to see a lot of projects, we're going to see a lot of projects, I think, over the course of the next 10 to 15 years. They're going to be in the $200,000 to $300,000 range.
Good. So, yeah, if anybody gets a chance, just read through it, and that'll be our fund over the next, well, a couple of months.
Yeah. And the reason we're starting a little bit later is we have a little bit more time that came out of the state requiring additional public hearings this year for levy rate, which as of right now is planned to stay at 1299.
State figure for the highway, is that based on just, are you negotiating anything, or is it just the length? Lengthening your foot or, you know, in your yard?
That was their first salvo. Our first is going to say no. It's based upon the cost per lineal foot in their mind, what they think they could get it done for. We just agree. We're going to let them know that, and then we'll just keep negotiating back and forth.
Unless they want to throw one in the snowplow.
Well, yeah, for the heavy equipment, for the investment of big equipment for that, that's pretty.
So what, they're not going to give us reimbursement for the, any of the equipment to take it over. What they're going to come out and do is say, if, to bring it up to standard, it would be, let's just say, a two or three inch asphalt overlay. It costs X amount of dollars per lineal, lineal foot to do that on this section. So they, they break it down into sections and say, this one graded out at this, this